No building or structure in the mailbox driveway.
So it shouldn't be eleven C.
It should be C.
As long as he can count those numbers, he can't move out of that.
I think it's wrong.
Ninety dash, it should just be ninety dash seventy dash.
The others might not cooperate, they may tell me no.
Call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mall Mel Planning Commission, February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty. Given the circumstances tonight, unless I have any objections from any other commissioners, we will defer announcements to the end of the meeting. Do I have any objections?
None.
None.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. You have the minutes from last month's meeting in your packet. Does anyone have any changes or edits or additions?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Alright, the minutes are approved. Alright, I have no public comments on it. We have a comment card, let's see if it's on a non-agenda item or not. Alright, I have no public comments on non-agenda items, so I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Verify this comment card as well. Okay. We will open the public hearing and we will move, starting with the old business, we are revisiting item number one, the revised preliminary plat for the M at White Oak Crossing, Mr. Steve K. and the applicant, uh, Mr. Grummer.
Alrighty, Mr. Chairman, uh, I need to, I need to speak into that, I guess. Uh, forgive me for, this is my first time to sit up here, so, um, as we move through the agenda, this item was previously on the agenda last month, it was tabled to, uh, to this month, as I recall, and it pertains to the preliminary plat for the M development. The plat has gone through the review process, the checklist been, has been provided to you, and on that checklist, you'll find some of the items that came back for review and change under staff comments, you'll find number, item number twenty-three, the final plat review and approval will be contingent upon review of bills of assurance and compliance with section ninety-four dash four fifty-four concerning bills of assurance, covenants, trusts, and homeowner, homeowner associations. Item number twenty-five, preliminary plat approval is contingent upon compliance, including the installation of currently required controls. And then we also have contingent upon a filed access easement for Kim Drive, which has been provided to you in addition, which is in your packet. There's a statement for construction of utilities that was provided, um, that shows the agreement between the adjacent landowner Cypress Bay Development and M Development for Kim Drive, as shown on the preliminary plat, providing a sixty-foot easement onto the proposal, and this will lead to an access easement to be recorded prior to approval of the preliminary plat. And then engineering comments, number five, the preliminary plat approval is contingent upon compliance with engineering, and the preliminary plat approval is contingent upon compliance with number five and number nine of that. The fire department has reviewed, and their comment was that Kim Drive and emergency access in phase two must meet weight and access requirements for emergency vehicles prior to filing of the final plat, and then additional comments were to satisfy all staff, fire department, commissioner, and engineering comments prior to the, uh, the approval of the preliminary plat. Staff recommendations are contingent approval based on satisfaction of all departmental commissioner, engineering comments, and the obtaining of any necessary variances.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Grummer. Do we have any questions to staff from any of the commissioners?
Uh, I have one for staff. Uh, at subcommittee meeting, item six in the preliminary development and the final plat, there was a little, I didn't quite understand, in one place we called the common areas, common areas, and then on the plat, we called them tracks. Uh, was that addressed?
Uh, yes, sir. We reached out, and there will be notes, which Holloway Engineering has provided those updates already, which has been provided to staff. They've included on the preliminary plat, as well as on the bill of assurance, they've included tracks with the word common space to identify those areas to, uh, that require maintenance.
Okay. And then I have one more, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in the fire department, uh, before the thirty-first lot is built, that secondary access will be usable. Did I understand that correctly?
Uh, that is correct. Part of the requirement that will be placed on the, uh, before the final plat is approved is that Kim Drive will be, will be finished out. On the preliminary plat, uh, the, uh, the requirement is that the emergency access is all, meets the standards for the weight. Does that answer your question?
That's all I got. Thank you.
I'd have a follow-up question on that. Uh, the number of units that can be built before that emergency exit has, I mean, that secondary entrance is what, thirty or thirty-one? Thirty. Should there not be a plat note somewhere basically saying that there won't be, thirty-first house won't be built until that is, road's complete? I, I'm being picky.
We could provide one, but it's fire code.
Mr. Redd.
You're not gonna get a building permit for a thirty-first lot.
Okay.
Yes, Griffin, two hundred Casey Drive.
Thank you.
I think the way we've got this set up, sir, is that we won't have any buildings occupied at all until the final plat's approved by planning, and so there won't be any houses in there, anybody living there, until we have the final plat approved. And on this plat, we're showing that we're gonna have that emergency access up to the standards of the fire department. And so the emergency access will already be constructed and ready prior to anybody occupying any house. So the thirty rule doesn't matter. So I don't think we need to add that note for that reason.
That's fine.
And, Mr. Commissioner, I'll add as well that that's part of our review before the final plat, before the final plat is filed, they will not be able to pull any building permits, and that's part of our condition, is that, um, that all entry accesses meet, uh, meet the requirements. So we'll make sure, and since that is gonna be a ways down the line before all of their infrastructure is put in place, we're talking many months, we're anticipating Kim Drive to be built out in full, but, uh, but either way, we're, we'll make sure that the fire department and all aspects are satisfied before we even allow one building permit to be pulled.
Uh, I may be being a little bit picky, but, you know, my concern is that we're dealing with a street that's not in the city of Mall Mel.
Right.
We have no control over what they're gonna do, so, I mean.
And that's.
That creates a little bit of a problem that needs a little bit more coordination, I think.
Right. And that's one of the reasons why we required the access easement be filed prior to the preliminary plat approval. That way, number one, we make sure that they have access to it, but then we tie the, uh, the completion of Kim Drive to the infrastructure improvements, which will be happening through the preliminary. So if commissioners are, would prefer to have a note on the, on the plat, we can add that as a condition.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask you, Jess? One, follow-up first with your, your com, your initial comments when you were up before. You says, is the intent of developer is to move forward with the construction of the emergency access as shown with phase one?
Yes.
So the, that emergency access will be constructed as part of phase one, whether it's one lot or thirty, or somewhere in between?
Yes.
Which, was that a requirement of the fire department for that access to be constructed prior to the thirtyth lot? It was not, correct?
Because our phase one has more than thirty lots, it then is a requirement to have that emergency access.
Unless you move forward to phase.
And so unless we came back and changed the phasing, right now, we have more than thirty lots there, we need to provide emergency access in phase one.
What type of approval do you have from the north, with North Little Rock that it's permissible to access Kim Drive, that location?
We have not got any approval from them. Will the fire department from North Little Rock be servicing Kim? I mean, servicing the M development with Mall Mel?
So, so it's, it's kind of a phased process. So North Little Rock is not, um, they have not dedicated Kim Drive in yet because it's still in the preliminary process. That's, so what we've, what we're doing is, uh, we've allowed for the access easement, which makes certain that, um, the M property has access to that future road. Now, as far as completion of that road, uh, the, the key, number one, is, is that it does have, um, meets the requirements of the fire department. So whenever North Little Rock dedicates that road in, then it's automatically public and they'll be given access. The access right now is being handled by the adjacent property owner, which is, um, the, um, Country Club of Arkansas Development, is that correct?
Yes.
Right. So because all these developments around are happening in unison, um, we, we have to kind of work through that process. So they're developing at the same time as CCA. Does that, so, right now, it's, it's an access easement until that point in time in which it's dedicated, and then it'll become public access.
Also, Eric Holloway met the fire department out there, and the fire department checked the gravel drive as the condition is now, and they're okay with how it is now. So it's already in an acceptable condition.
And I'll, I wanna make one other point, and it was on my punch list, item four. So Kim Drive and emergency access in phase two must meet weight and access requirements for emergency vehicles prior to filing of the final plat. So if it meets that, and they've been given access easement to that, then they cannot be denied access. Uh, I've, I've tried to think through the worst-case scenario of what might happen. Let's just say CCA doesn't finish out its development, still having that access easement on file shows that you have access to it in order to utilize it. But with the amount of development that's happening around it, uh, and what we're seeing, that's, it's highly unlikely that that's not gonna happen. But again, we will have access, and the emergency access will be built.
You'll have to come back and figure out something else if something happens, because you're not gonna permit the lots. You won't permit the occupancy otherwise.
Right.
The debate here is that, should you have an, where I'm headed with this, from the applicant's standpoint, is should the access easement parallel all the way up to the, I guess it would be all the way to the city of Mall Mel, where's that phase, I don't know where that line is from one side to the other. So you'd never be cut off regardless of, if Kim's not gonna develop, so, but I realize, I realize that it's unlikely.
North Little Rock.
Yeah, I see.
Mall Mel city line, and then that exact line extends another, was it thirty or sixty-foot easement?
Uh, sixty foot.
Six, so.
We're, we're just betting on the.
We got from Mall Mel plus sixty feet in the easement, and if that road, if, at that time, the fire department finds that the road's not in the condition it needs to be, we then would be responsible to get it up to the condition it needs to be to get, to get the final plat. So it's in our court, and then y'all basically have the right to accept it or not.
So, and, and because this project is gonna be phased out, you know, this first phase, we're kind of, we're, we're saying, okay, we need and require an access easement. So you're not gonna be granted, um, building, uh, final plat until that access easement is filed. But any future phases, it's up to the planning commission to, if that Kim Drive has not been fully developed out, then at that point, you know, if you need, if you need to deny or, or require any additional when it pertains to the finish out of that, that's, um...
Any further questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, I've got another one of, uh, this is more for clarification. Uh, on the plat, we got, where it shows the rear, rear alley access, rear access alley, says twenty-two feet. At a forty-four foot right away, over here, where you're talking about, it says twenty-four feet. So I'm not sure in the detail.
I think that that's a typo.
Okay. What's twenty-two feet?
The twenty-two feet is the minimum requirement. Um, this one has curb and gutter on it, and it's made twenty-four foot.
Yeah.
So we're actually building it to a standard higher than what's required.
Well, that's what, that was my question, is that in the detail here, it shows twenty-four, but up here, you show twenty-two.
Right. Regardless, we will meet the code if we exceed the standard condition.
And.
Make a change on that, put that to be twenty-four, rear access alley?
I'll make a note on the, uh, on the comments we'll pass on, that that needs to be corrected before the preliminary plat is approved.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Grummer, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Trying to be able to couch this so it's clear, and I'm not being clear with my comments so far. So if for any reason this, uh, Kim Drive is not dedicated, for whatever reason, would we require a dedicated easement parallel to the west property boundary up to White Oak Crossing? We're, we're, we're betting on the come here a little bit, that, and I don't, I don't have any doubt that CCA is gonna, or the Country Club's gonna continue on, but the way that this is drawn, if, if it's, if it's not dedicated at that time, then the, would we, would we require a dedicated easement with the adjoining property owner to provide access from White Oak down to the emergency access?
We've already filed that easement.
Well.
There's more than one party, there's three parties, other than the actual owner of the property, that have easements for that road. So you're not gonna be able to get rid of the road, there are already three parties, other than the owner, have easements to that.
So I'm not too sure as to whether if it needs to, uh, bound against the boundary line, but, um, but part of the statement of construction of utilities, and our requirement is to have, and I'll read it out, the CBD also hereby grants to M a sixty-foot easement onto proposed Kim Drive as shown on the preliminary plat for the M, uh, at White Oak Crossing for emergency vehicle access. And they are, they're gonna be required to provide me a, a filed copy of an access easement before the preliminary plat is approved, and that's going to grant access into that, on the end of the emergency, for perpetuity until, um, until something changes, which would be a right-of-way dedication.
But it's only to the, for the point indicated on this, the, the easement, does the easement run north-south, all the way from the point of access to the emergency drive, all the way north to White Oak Crossing?
Yes, sir. It follows Kim Drive, it's supposed to go to Kim Drive, so we'll, we'll make sure that the access easement goes from White Oak going south to the emergency access. Okay.
That, that's a fifty-foot easement, because I, I, by looking at this drawing, I thought that it was terminated way down south, but you're saying it doesn't run north up to White Oak Crossing?
So what I can do is have them, um, uh, better, uh, better show that, that sixty-foot easement from White Oak Crossing down to the emergency access, where that actual, um, legal description's gonna be for that access easement. And we'll make sure that it's not only detailed on the plat and the development plan, um, well for us to, to understand what that is, we'll also make sure that it is a full connection from White Oak into the emergency access, uh, so that, uh, so that it complies with our requirements. Would that satisfy?
Yeah, that's satisfied.
Okay.
Further questions or comments?
Uh, the other question I have is, I, I'm not for sure about this or not, I was talking with the Mam City Attorney about it, but I think that is the wrong reference on the variance that we requested.
That, that is correct, that, he's correct. The code section is actually seventy dash one thirty-two, uh, just subsection C. It's not B eleven C, it's just the regular subsection C.
And that's, uh?
And that's how it was in the minutes also.
Entrance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's just the wrong code section.
Right.
Okay.
Well, needs to be, the correct one needs to be reflected, though.
Okay. Anything further from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. No further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
I don't have my agenda in front of me, so maybe the person, I was digging around for. This, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for, uh, for, this is, this stays with us, for pass, due pass recommendation or approval, I should say approval here, get, get everything right, for the revised preliminary plat for I am at White Oak Crossing, Steve M. Steve KM, Steve KM as the applicant, pending any other further commissioner or staff comments.
And the preliminary.
I believe it stays with us, isn't that correct? Scott?
Uh, yes, sir, it does.
Whisper in my ear.
Yes, stays with you.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Alright, we have contingent approval. Moving on to item number two, the revised preliminary development plan for the same development, Mr. Grummer.
Alrighty, um, so again, this is the, uh, the revised development plan that came across, uh, last month. It was previously approved back in May of twenty nineteen, uh, and this is showing some revisions to that development plan, uh, as well as the plat previously. You'll find the, the punch list in front of you, and in that, we have, uh, the, the staff comments. Staff comments are that item number twenty and twenty-two should comply, in addition, comply with all fire department comments, comply with all commissioner comments, and comply with all city engineer comments. Staff recommendations on the development plan is a due pass recommendation to the Mall Mel City Council, contingent upon satisfaction of all fire department, commissioner, staff, city engineer, and obtaining any necessary variances. And then, um, the only, uh, the only comments that came in that I, uh, we made modifications prior to the meeting was to the plan notes, uh, we added on the plan notes, similar to on the, uh, plan notes for the plat, a, um, modifying it from, uh, showing, um, let me pull up my plan here, where item number six says, "The access easements parks, perimeter, fence, wall, gates, and all common areas shall be maintained by the property owner's improvement district." We had them include both common areas slash tracks, since tracks are indicated on the, um, on the plat and the development plan, that those items are considered also common area, which need to be maintained by the, um, by the improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions or comments of staff or the applicant?
My, my same comments would be, without having to go back through, would be the same for the preliminary development plan as well, too. Variance and the same, uh, clarification on the access easement as well.
And also the comment I made about the, um, alley correcting that, uh, the mention.
Yep, got it.
Uh, they, uh, Mr. Gershman, Chairman Gershman, the, the other question, I guess this is for Mam City Attorney, is that this, this new bill of assurance, um, position that we're in, when is the completion approval required for you to be satisfied with that? Where, where does that happen in the process of development?
The code section, um, I believe it's ninety-four dash four fifty-four, mentions that it just has to be in preliminary form, um, at the stage that we're doing the preliminary development plan. When the final plat's filed, it will be, um, an item on the list for it to be reviewed prior to approval of the final plat.
It stays staff level, correct?
Well, um, so, the, the way that, the way that the ordinance reads that, uh, it does, it, it stays staff level, but in this situation, and, uh, that's something we may need to look at as it moves forward, um, we've put the requirement for both staff, uh, and approval, uh, of the final plat, which would be, uh, commissioner approval, um, only because, uh, the BOA is in preliminary form right now, which is typically how it is on the front end of a development. And then as they move through and they finish the infrastructure, that's where they start putting the investment in, no different than, they're not going to invest money into the civil engineering right now until they get the, the approval of the, of the preliminary plat. So, um, that's one of the requirements we put on the punch list of the, uh, of the plat that was just approved, that that BOA is presented in final form and approved, um, as part of the final plat process.
So that'd be at, um, prior to issuing occupancy for any?
That's correct, so.
Building, so you, you'll go through the entire building process without that being approved?
No, sir. Uh, so, the roads and, uh, the utilities will be installed after the preliminary plat is signed off on, and then once that's done, before the final plat is filed, no buildings can be constructed, uh, until the final plat is filed. So before we file that final plat, the BOA will have to go, and the final plat will go back through the approval process, and that's where it'll be, so we're not gonna release that final plat and the allowance of any building construction until it's been reviewed and approved.
It'll be prior to, uh, permits being issued.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And this is a little bit of an unusual section, because it does also mention that the planning commission is to approve the uses of the common areas, which haven't been defined yet, so that would be prior to final plat as well.
Correct.
Anything further from the commission? I will entertain a motion.
I'm on a roll.
I'm on a roll. Still Scott. Motion to, uh, recommend due pass on to the city council for the revised preliminary development plan for the I am at White Oak Crossing, Steve KM, applicant, pending any other commissioner or staff comments. Sorry, Scott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? We have a due pass recommendation. We'll ma, now finish old business and move into new business. Uh, we have, uh, first, the election of officers, the offices of chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. We can do these, uh, one by one unless anyone else has a counterproposal.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that all sitting members, chairman, vice chairman, and secretary, uh, be nominated to serve for another year.
I second that motion.
Vice Chair Todd, do you have any objection to your renomination?
Not at all.
Mr. Ramsey's not here to object, and I have no objection, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Our officers.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. It's a tough contested race. Moving on to item number three, um, the proposed amendment to the Mall Mel Master Use Plan from special use residential to commercial. Ms. Vicky Singh, the applicant, and, uh, we have two comment cards on this, so we will let, uh, Mr. Grummer give the staff report on the first item first, and then we will hear, uh, public comment. Mr. Grummer?
Alrighty, um, bear with me here. Okay, so a, um, a zoning analysis was done on this, which pertains also to the land use. Currently, so an applicant, application was provided for a change of, of zoning of the current, of the subject property from PRD to a C three, uh, so we did a, ran an analysis on the property. The, the PRD for, uh, Country Club of Arkansas is a fairly large area, uh, and I'll make note that the PRD does allow for commercial. Uh, the commercial is a C one type, uh, and the location that this was at was intended for commercial. So, uh, ultimately, the, the type that is allowed in the C one would be able to go there. The, uh, the property owner is, uh, is requesting an increase to that to be more compatible with what's in the area, so we ran an analysis, and I'll just read that to you. All abutting property in Mall Mel city limits are zoned, uh, PRD. The property abuts White Oak Crossing Road and North Little Rock city limits on the south boundary. North Little Rock zoning, which fronts White Oak Crossing and counts, uh, and counts Massey Road, and in close proximity to the subject property, includes C three and I two uses. So you'll find that, um, the subject property, although is PRD, uh, a property that, that abuts White Oak Crossing across the street, is zoned I two and C three in North Little Rock. So I had to do an analysis. So, I had to do an analysis on those and determine the uses of all those in comparison to what our C3, as well as our C2 and C1, and I did a grid sheet and ran that, and what you'll find is that the, our C3 use has uses that are comparable to both the C3 in North Little Rock, as well as the I2 in North Little Rock. So where North Little Rock C3 use allows for some, something, I'm sorry, the C3 in North Little Rock may not allow for certain uses such as a car lot of whatnot, the I2 use actually would allow for a car lot. So you'll find that there's crossover there. When we looked at the PRD, which, and the type of retail commercial that would have been allowed in a PRD, such as the C1 zone, the C1 zone, when you combine that with the allowance of multifamily in a PRD, there are certain types that are not allowed within the C3. So, the transition from a PRD to a commercial use would actually take away some of the uses that you would find in the PRD. So the current zoning allows for retail commercial uses permitted in a C1 zone and multifamily up to R3 density. So the density already allowed on the lot is up to an R3 density, which would be multifamily. A change to C3 would allow components of C1 and C2, but remove the right for multifamily residential. So actually, this change would take away the multifamily allowance component. In addition, Maumell C3 zone does not allow uses commonly opposed in close proximity to low density residential in schools such as hotels and liquor stores and restaurants with dancing and live entertainment. So in the C3 zone, those would be restricted, which typically is, you'll find, is preferential close to residential. C3 does allow commercial services that would serve the retail needs of surrounding residential neighborhoods while allowing this lot to include uses similar to those allowed by North Little Rock across the street. Lastly, with the opening of White Oak Crossing interchange to I40, traffic along this roadway has increased that's on White Oak, substantially furthering the move away from residential and more commercial. So it doesn't make sense for the location of this specific lot being right on White Oak to be residential, so it really has to have a commercial use. The question is, is what that type of commercial use is? And based on the analysis, we found that it's the C3 that would be zoned would be very comparable with what's across the street, as well as what that type of use along White Oak would be. So I will note, I know that we have had some, we had comments that came in from residents. We had five calls that were against the rezone. We had two that were for the rezone, and then we had one that was of no opinion. As to the reasoning behind those, those that were against, I believe the majority of that was just a concern over increase in traffic in that area based on commercial use. So, I will say that the city, and some of you may be aware that there's a survey out there currently, that there's a study being done for that area and traffic movement to get feedback. So the city is looking at how traffic can be better moved in that area to accommodate that. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Let me move into, we have two public comment cards. Ms. Rainey. If you please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Sonia Rainey. I'm at 208 Marie Jean. Thank you. I just had some concern about turning our community. The reason why I bought a house in that particular community, it's really so that my son could have a place to grow up. And I feel like by having other commercial property, you know, that's going to make that feeling, it's not going to be a community anymore. And I know it's just a little small plot of land, but you know, when you turn in and drive by that road every single day, and you have whatever property that we're trying to build out there, it's not going to make it home. I mean, when we're in our neighborhood, we want to feel like we're in our neighborhood. And so by having other commercial property, I don't think that's aesthetically making us feel like we belong in that community. I plan to live in my house for a very long time, and I think by having that, it's not the best use of our land. And then, we have empty property. I know that it's North Little Rock, but jump zone and things like that where they're not being utilized, and I could see in the future where, I mean, what if it's abandoned? I mean, what does that going to look to our community in that area? So I just want you to consider that, to keep it the way it is at this point and not commercialize it in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Rainey?
Thank you.
And now we have Ms. Gunderman.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Gunderman. I currently live at 321 Carondelet in the Country Club of Arkansas, and this is in the Quarters neighborhood that is just north of the ball field, so it's over by that area. I've lived in Maumell for 23 years. I spent the first 10 years off North Odom, 12 years off of South Odom, and then just last year, I moved across town a few miles into the Country Club of Arkansas. And I do want to say, first of all, I know I've just got three minutes, but I do extend my sympathies to all of you in the city, in the loss of Mr. Neri. I've worked with him before, and I appreciate how hard he worked on that new exit and what all of you've done for the city and for the new exit, because that is certainly helping the residents out there. It has really improved my drive into Little Rock. And I make a pass through Diamond Park, this stretch of road, multiple times a day. Sometimes I'm making three or four trips, round trips to Little Rock into town every day. So I am here just as a local resident to speak about this zoning change that has been requested from PRD to C3, and I'm going to try to get through my points as quickly as possible. I do want to say first that I support business development, I support more sales tax revenue for Maumell, and I appreciate the challenge that you all constantly have in front of you to weigh the needs of residents and the expectations of residents with the opportunities for business development. I know that's not an easy task. But I am here to say that I do not support a zoning change from PRD to C3 for three reasons, for this particular strip, particularly along the east side of Diamond Park. And so I'm asking you here tonight to vote no on both of these requests to change this zoning. I'm here to speak to, again, three points pretty quickly, and I laid out these same three points to my neighborhood, the Quarters neighborhood. We have a Facebook neighborhood page. I got back 25 more no votes, and none of them could be here tonight, but there were 25 other people that said for the same reasons that I'm conveying here tonight, they do not support this zoning change in this particular strip of land. And, you know, really, those, I would say that a vote to change the zoning from PRD, which does allow, as we know, some residential, some development, commercial development that supports the neighborhood, you know, a change to, a vote to change that would compromise, I'll say briefly, it'll compromise the safety of the families and the environment that we have at the ballpark. That is the last strip of land that we have, and that really is a buffer there between all the other commercial development that's happening elsewhere. And secondly, you know, I think it will compromise our property values as someone who's just bought a home out there. And then thirdly, I think it will lead to greater traffic congestion. Actually, it already has. To speak to the traffic situation, on the zoning analysis that you referred to tonight, I also have a copy here, and I do see that it says, you know, the traffic consideration here is not applicable. I'm not sure what is meant by that, but I would say that traffic is a very relevant consideration for the residents. And, you know, as I looked at the master, the Maumell master street plan from 2018, I can see that Diamond Park, that little short road, is a, it is an urban street, and according to what I read in the regs, those urban neighborhood streets accommodate a traffic pattern of about 2,500, you know, a volume of about 2,500 a day in terms of traffic volume. That is connecting, as you know, the two other minor arterials which can feed a lot more traffic. So we are, we currently are seeing a bottleneck there.
So it won't cut you off if you could start to wrap it up a little bit?
Oh, absolutely, okay. So, you know, to speak primarily then to the traffic, that is becoming a bottleneck in that area, and if the current street is classified as only an urban street that has a, that only accommodates a low volume, I would ask how you all in good faith could approve another commercial development that is only going to increase the traffic flow in that area. I am aware of the roundabout that is under consideration in the longer-term plan, and I would just ask you to defer, that a no vote tonight to change this, you know, that could even be temporary, but I would encourage all of you to see that that infrastructure is in place first, and, you know, for the traffic, to relieve the traffic, the roundabout that's in place. And wait, and allow the commercial zoning that's there that's already been approved, allow that to develop, see how this neighborhood plays out, and put the infrastructure in place to alleviate the traffic without creating more problems. And again, I'm here, you know, representing myself and 25 other residents, so I'd appreciate you considering my opinions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we have no other public comment cards. Any commissioners have any questions or comments of staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have one of staff. I'm going to put him on the spot, but I've already looked up the entered. In PRD, it does allow for multifamily in the R3 class, and that particular piece of property, I don't think anybody would ever put a single-family residence there. And in the R3, do you have, know the density, maximum density per acre? Okay, I got you. It's 35, 35 units per acre. So in that 2.6 acres, there could be 80 apartments sitting right there. I wonder what the traffic on that would be? So it's kind of one of these things where someone's trying to buy the property and develop it, and it's a difficult thing, but we live nine miles from the capital of the state, and we're going to grow. We've just built millions of dollars worth of blacktop coming into our neighborhood. And I'm fortunate that I don't have to go out at the same time as everybody else does, because I no longer have to be in Little Rock at 8:00. My wife does, she leaves at 6:30, but she has enjoyed the new access point, because she goes right downtown by the state capitol. So, development is a difficult thing, and we just kind of have to adjust to it. I do know that over in your neighborhood, Ms. Gunderman, there's 36 lots under the development now. There is another 52 that's on the land next to it, and there is another 74 that we haven't seen on paper yet past that. And then, over by the development that we just approved or sent over to the city council, there's quite a few lots there. And over in the North Little Rock road, that Kim Road that we're talking about in North Little Rock, there's potentially 741 single-family houses there. So when people go to Kroger from North Little Rock, more than likely, they're not going to go all the way down Count Massey and then back up Highway 100. They're going to cut through Country Club Parkway.
I'd just like to say a couple things. Mark Rutter with Holloway Engineering. We feel that this is a perfect transitional zoning. We've got the ballpark right there, and it lends to the whole idea of Maumell's theme of work, work, live, and play, or play, work, and live. Because it makes the open space area and the ball fields more of a town center type of atmosphere if we have commercial developments here with it, where people can just walk to it and don't have to drive. They can park at the ball fields. This particular applicant is probably interested in developing a lease space type thing, which may have a convenience store, maybe, you know, all of the things that were involved in the C3 zoning, which I included in the packet. I doubt it'll be automotive, but it could be. But it just makes sense to allow this zoning as a transitional zoning, because of course, with White Oak Crossing and the interchange, the whole world changed. And obviously, we're going to see a lot of commercial along the whole stretch, and including the commercial zoning for C4 down the street. You know, that's a half mile away. So, you know, we encourage, among other things, obviously, we're big time in favor of the roundabout at the intersection of Country Club and White Oak, because that will concentrate all that traffic to the roundabout and get it off Diamond Park Lane. You know, all that will come down, but Diamond Park is the residents up in her area, Carondelet, and the rest of 23 and 21. So we just, you know, we'd like to keep this, you know, revenue and income in Maumell, because North Little Rock has commercial zoning all along this stretch. So if it doesn't develop here, it's going to develop someplace else. And traffic has always been the problem in Maumell, and we've seen that White Oak has improved other areas of Maumell's traffic problem. So I'm sure we'll continue to have traffic problems, but this we feel like is a good investment.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter.
Chairman, may I make a comment real quick? So, a couple of comments, just in addressing the two comments. Number one, concerning transition to commercial, the property is actually already allowed for commercial, so being it's privately owned, the city really has no direction as to whether residential or commercial is put there if no zoning was changed. So we really can't control that process. What we can control is the type of zoning that goes there. And to Ms. Gunderman's comments, actually, I would agree that on the traffic analysis, I did make a mistake on that, because you're right, it does, there is going to be some traffic affecting in there, and I apologize, there was, when I came into this, there was, I went through the analysis, taking Jim's stuff and trying to review it. There's going to be, there's going to be a lot of things the city's going to have to look at from a planning perspective in here, dealing with traffic, and that's one of the reasons why the city is engaged, an engineering firm, to help us look at that as expeditiously as possible. But from the actual zone change, one of the things that I've learned in planning is your transect zones, you want to go from your urban to rural transect, and being that this property is located on White Oak Crossing across from other areas, my hope would be that from a planning perspective, that we would make sure and look at, be very sensitive as to the rest of the property moving back towards the residential area, that we protect the intent to make sure that the transect, and, because you can create buffers to protect the residential based on the type of development that goes there. But for this property being right on White Oak Crossing, staff recommendation still kind of remains with a transition to C3.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Commissioner Johnson?
The only thing I'd like to add is that the biggest difference, me looking at this, is that we're going for PRD, that does not stop here, it goes on the council. So there's a two-phase process for anything that goes there. If we go see three or another zone, or we take it out of a special use, it opens up by right with very limited, I guess, input, if you will, or limits our input. So that, to me, that's the biggest. We have gas stations right across the street as well, too, we have industrial, so I do concur with staff's recommendation, but, you know, you, we are losing a little bit of the ability to have some impact there as things develop by going to just more of a permissive right type of zoning, which is the only negative that I can say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, I have a little reservation in doing a zoning change without knowing exactly what they want to put there. I have no problem with the fact that it is commercial and it should be developed that way. I'd be more in favor of a planned commercial development, raising I'd be more in favor of a planned commercial development, raising up to C1, C1 and C2, as opposed going all the way to C3 on it. But that's my opinion, but I, you know, Greg, I know what you're saying, too. It does go on to the City Council, and they would have the ultimate decision to be made on that.
And I guess it's a little selfish from our, I mean, we have OS next to that. We all know, that's all ballparks. That's a huge city investment that the city and everybody has invested in a long period of time. So, we are giving up a little bit. We know we have an interest applicant, and I think that Mr. Rutter is exactly right. They're going to keep on cruising east and find other piece of property, is what's going to happen, because it's permitted by right more than likely in what they're going to construct. And for some reason, we did inquire to that effect, that subcommittee, and it's not electing to disclose that at this point in time, and that could be proprietary and also a competitive edge as well, too. So, we have to respect that.
Anything else from the commission? Madam City Attorney?
I just wanted to make sure that we go over and review the guidelines that are to be used when reviewing this type of amendment. And this is from Section 54-79, Subsection 7. The Planning Commission and the City Council will review the proposal and base their decision using the following guidelines. A, other changes that have occurred in the neighborhood since the land use plan was adopted or the latest amendment was enacted. B, whether these changes resulted in a change to the neighborhood's character sufficiently to justify the proposed land use plan change. C, issues and concerns raised by the neighborhood when submitted with sufficient specificity to enable the commission or City Council to respond to the issues. And D, other substantial or technical evidence that any proponent or opponent of the proposed change submits.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Anything else from the commission? Hearing nothing further, I will entertain a motion.
I'll put it out there. We make a motion to approve in a positive for the proposed amendment to the Maumell Master Use Plan from SUR, Special Use Resident to Commercial COMMM, with Vicki Singh as the applicant, pending any other comments or from staff or commission.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those oppose no? All right. Motion carries, and the land use will be changed as proposed. Moving on to item number four, Mr. Grummer, any additional comments in addition to what you previously stated regarding item number three?
No, sir, the same comments. Stan?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in our motion, did we make a recommendation to the City Council, or did we just vote for it?
This item or number three, John?
On number three.
Yeah, I don't remember. If he needs to go to council, he can go to council.
Okay.
It does go to the council.
Yeah, I think all zoning goes on the council, if I remember right.
Any?
Same thing before, thank you, though.
Sure. Any commissioner questions or comments regarding item number four? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to make a do-pass recommendation to the proposed amendment of Maumell Master Zoning Plan to C3 from PRD for that spot of land.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those oppose no?
No.
A vote of six to one, the motion carries, and we issue a do-pass recommendation for the zoning change. With no more new business, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to liaison reports. City Council meeting February 3rd. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I had, February 3rd, there wasn't anything on the February 3rd meeting that affected the City or the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. February 18th was mine. The only action item that affected the Planning Commission was that Commissioner Smith and Fisher were reappointed to their positions. Council liaisons for the month of March, March 2nd is Commissioner Ramsey, and March 16th is Commissioner Todd. And we will now handle announcements that are typically handled on the front end of the meeting. Mr. Grummer?
Thank you, Chairman. So, this has been a turbulent week, by all means, and one of the reasons why I'm here is because Jim Neri, who was our planning director for many, many years, has been, has been ill for quite a while, and we were notified this week that he had passed away. So, I just wanted to share and read just something that the City of Maumell wanted to convey, that the City of Maumell is deeply saddened to announce the loss of our planning and zoning director, Jim Neri. Joining us on January 13th, 2003, Jim dedicated 17 years to the growth and development of our city. Prior to his onboarding with the City of Maumell, Jim served as the Director of Planning and Development for Plaskett County, and was an alumnus of the University of Central Arkansas, holding a bachelor's in speech and theater arts, his biggest passion. A certified floodplain manager since 2000, Jim was among the first group to be certified in Arkansas. He was a member of the Association of State Floodplain Managers, White Oak Bayou Wetlands Conservancy Steering Committee, American Public Works Association, Arkansas Floodplain Management Association, past chairman and governor's disaster counsel on the floodplain committee. He also held a certification as a national certified floodplain manager. He earned countless state and national awards for the City of Maumell. Most notably, awards include the Arkansas Floodplain Management Association, Special Achievement Award, five-year recipient, Arkansas Floodplain County, two-year recipient, and Community Two-Year Recipient of the Year. He was also granted the James Lee Witt Award for Local Excellence in Floodplain Management. Jim was instrumental in instituting and developing a number of programs, ordinances, and training sessions that ensured our community was safe, efficient, and clean. Much of his work, including floodplain management, stormwater compliance, city street maintenance, and hazard mitigation, remained behind the scenes and out of the spotlight, but that does not negate its importance. His work was vital in keeping our community beautiful, progressive, and operational. In his personal life, he loved good food and was the go-to man around the Office for Restaurant Recommendations. He was an animal lover, especially for his cat, Snickers, and he was the biggest fan of Old Rock, Tom Petty, and A Good Time. Lauren Fason, who is here, a city employee that worked for Jim for many years, remembers his passion for travel and adds that he always found the perfect Hallmark card for the special people in his life. It is a very somber day around here at City Hall. Jim, your loss is felt over the City of Maumell. Your impact continues to make a difference in Plaskett County, and your legacy will forever be ingrained in the history of Central Arkansas. We miss you already, Jim. May you rest in peace. The city will be hosting a celebration of life service for Jim tomorrow, February 28th, at 5:30 PM at the Center on the Lake, which is on Club Manor Lane in Odom South. Public is welcome to attend. And I'd just like to add and say that I was very privileged to be able to work with Jim. It's amazing how my first impression of him seemed like rough around the edges, but I tell you what, when you actually start working with him, you see his true heart and his passion for what he did. So, he'll be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. And I can safely say on behalf of this commission that Mr. Neri will, his absence will leave a big hole, and that we will all very much miss him personally as well as professionally. If any other commissioners would like to, you know, say anything regarding Mr. Neri, now's the time you would like to.
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay if we had a moment of silence just in Jim's?
It'd be very appropriate. Mr. Grummer, any further announcements? No further announcements, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
We adjourn.